........................
.............................................
.................................
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. On Employee of the Month, Lieutenant Jesse Evans is awarded Employee of the Month for the month of March. We've had several deserving employees recognized in this manner nominated by the department heads or executive managers. This nomination was given, Lieutenant Evans was nominated not only by the executive manager but by his supporters. A testament of his true leadership skills and commitment to his staff. Lieutenant Evans has been one of the city of Florville since October first, two thousand and one. He fell behind with the Department of Testigator and Assistant Commander for the Narcotics Task Force as well as Special Operations Detective and Control Lieutenant for the Florville Police Department. He is a fire instructor, a master peace officer, and soon to complete his force work to earn his bachelor's degree. Some of the words or phrases utilized to describe Lieutenant Evans are that he's a cop, tough but fair, and someone we look up to. With Jesse Evans, Lieutenant, congratulations.
A cop's cop, what does that mean?
Over a beer, I'll bet you.
Lieutenant, you're gonna have to step up to the back to have the council to take the whole...
I don't know if you mentioned that, but Lieutenant is also safely charged when you're gone.
Yes, I'm the current, I'm the head of the city manager role when I have the power. Okay, Mayor, we'll move on to outstanding citizen award. Virgil Russell is awarded the first Outstanding Service Award primarily for his work with the Cemetery Association. I emphasize primarily because in addition, his presence at our council meeting has become one of the highlights. His candid approach to local political issues have brought some relief to those of us that are affected. Right or wrong, Mr. Russell speaks in his mind whether in the presence of supporters or detractors. For his continued work with the living as well as the departed, we recognize Virgil Russell as a human being of outstanding service.
Well, my balls left off here, don't they?
Council, would you please leave the honor of Secretary Bausch and Mr. Russell to take the whole way in.
But, you know, I, I know my mother's so proud of me. It's been a joy, couple of fresh years, man.
Come on, Mario, go get shaved, get in there, Mario.
You what? You're always... I'd like to go for a turn.
Alright. Congratulations, sir.
And we've heard surprising, I'll just warn you. This goes along with my major plaques, I love plaques.
Mr. Russell, could you please send your cemetery's report, and I know that Miss Keating has an issue that...
You ever do cemetery now?
Please, yes.
Alright. Uh, I'll put over here, uh, because you don't really have time to look at pictures. There's about twenty-eight pictures over here of the very cemetery, not including the citizens. And, uh, so I'd like to see everybody have time to do that. Uh, I was pretty embarrassed, you know, because, uh, uh, we did a lot. Well, the guards were all there, so, uh, I made it, said, you know, Lady Palmer, I wish you'd hear it. Uh-oh. The neighborhood was not a market situation, so I convinced her to get out of the horse. She didn't, uh, she called me yesterday, and, uh, and she says, just look, somebody, somebody stuck their truck down there or something, I go, dude, I'm afraid so. And I said, well, I got a second shot, I said, yeah, that was me, I'm sure. I said, I'll get it corrected, and it was kind of worse and worse, I had to, had to go, go your body shop to get out of it. And I'm dragging it out here, right? But I said, you know, sometimes it's a darn truck, I said, if I do it down here, I'll let it just kind of run. Uh, the fault came that I should resign. I said, no, but because you meant to, you didn't look at it. You do. No, okay, I don't. Uh, I believe that, uh, I'm still excited that their condition... Do you read English? Uh, I have, I have, I'm gonna read it for him. After ten, a little over ten months, I'm about to kind of get... Actually, yeah, this, this, uh, we can help to, uh, get this more organized. Since the cemetery is already now, this, we've got, uh, uh, this is all, uh, the world I manage by, this is money I have on. So, we'll be fine when it catches up on us, we'll be in a hurry on that. The tea, trees and great bulbs need tree, I agree that nine thousand dollar price, uh, but I always had one beer last time, it should be a lot less, so I'll talk to another couple of guys. Uh, the tree will, tree will pay, flag, tree by my flag installation, that's why they went up there. Uh, uh, ACB, uh, hopefully ACB will pay for the installation and closing. Uh, I've actually asked ACB for five thousand. Four, a thousand for each of those flags, and another thousand for, uh, for, uh, uh, flowering and, and stuff outside of the cemetery, across that. And, uh, I'd like to see a bunch of British flag, oh, real, especially, you know, because you've got to have a supply of water here and there, so. You know, it's just about these, the ACBs start to look like this, they are, even with that good debt going on. Uh, it's just about needing to get five thousand dollars, and, you know, while they just make up, and move over the mountain. But, uh, the continuation of water and mowing, uh, there's a lot to be done on that, it's, uh, it's partly low now. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just, uh, it's just, uh, we need to do it a lot better than that. No, would we come to, to that special, uh, celebration, to read a high school, and, uh, 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 more, you should, I mean, uh, good past. And I really feel like it'll boost the city, the times, uh, is about, uh, seven, seven o'clock on, uh, on the twenty-eighth of May, September the fourth. And, uh, it's got, I've talked to a couple of brick people who are part of the building, I've talked to the high schools. Jersey was awful, you know, he looked a lot better in black, pink, with his plant clothes, and the last, last bit I saw was around, but I thought he was... But the other thing that we, that we should have, we should build a, this is changing the events, allowing, uh, uh, the cemetery. Uh, somebody ought to be chunked out on the left, and so, and I don't think it needs to be the whole two, just the changes, you know, there. Uh, we've talked about changing the events on the other cemetery, but, you know, you just can't get there on your own. And so, but I do think this should be a real top priority. The other thing that should be probably getting is get some, get some water available to the two three old cemetery. But keep in mind now, the, the priority is the city cemetery, uh, one and a half, to, uh, have a really good, to have the roads paved, repaved, and, uh, situation like that. And, you know, we'll sit down and talk about whatever we need to do, uh, I'm gonna be out of town next week. I'll be in good shape if I'm thinking about the bad expression of North Carolina, so don't call me, I'll call y'all. But, uh, I think if I had a contact, the, uh, county agent, uh, about seven thirty, he knows exactly what the best thing to do on the scene, and get rid of four, and all that type of thing. And he's, he's still in the old, a, a, a part of the old work, I'm sure, and I would have talked to him, and he would have helped me with it, good guy. That's about all I have, the, the, uh, handout, talks board, give you a better identification on where those flags will be. Uh, the reason I put the wall for sure, is, you know, that's what I'm asking you, and I think they would be glad to put a flag there, and, you know, just have him on it, after that, it's, uh, a really great issue. And the thing that I thought, I'd get my phone ringing off the wall, is, hurry to see it openly, uh, you know, all I got is two or three friends that want some steak from barbecue. And, uh, we don't have time to clean it up, but, but anyway, we'll do all we can on that. And frankly, uh, realistically, I'll look at awards, uh, the other cemeteries have looked at my year, they're, uh, uh, that's unrealistic, kind of, well...
Just for, uh, the council, Mayor and Councilor, in attendance to our work, we did a contact with, uh, Monkeys for the fire incineration at the city park. We are currently working on, uh, continuing the fence project at the city cemetery. I believe Miss Keating had some issues with, uh, that's the cemetery, and, and the only question that I've got, or the only comment that I've got to the council, it's a director that you want me to look at those, those are private cemeteries that are not owned by the city.
Because they are in the city, and everybody dead and gone, was lost them. My uncle is one of those that left, a soldier of the first of all, that's here today, and when this dropped me and broke some of those marks, it came close to where he played out. And like I said, uh, they had some people, and they were running there, and I checked with the state police, we think they had a report, I checked everywhere, nobody knew I was having it, but it's deep, and they just broke those, uh, markers, even of children, they just made them. Hope was I not dead, you're saying, or fifty?
If it's something that the council wants me to look at, I can go back in there and look, I know this, uh, the, the equity scheme has taken the lead on some of those to hire contractual labor, go in there and, and mow and clean them up, and so, that's something that you want me to, to look at, I would.
See, uh, at one time, we had all, uh, fenced in, someone went over there, rolled them up, and... Now, the area doesn't have them, so that's one of the, I mean, that truck makes a big, we make that there, and a big, uh, pilot, and a airport, uh, uh, moment, that they had last year, they did, I talked to the Fed, talked about one and a half ago, they couldn't say nothing, and I talked to the parents, they couldn't say nothing. It's a rustle, and then I went to, uh, the county, they couldn't do nothing. They were afraid, they said, it's in the state, so the state could be able to take her, but what I'm saying is, if I still think it is a fence or something, because it was bad, very, and how they ever got it out without any help, I'm wondering. I've been checking the neighbors, nobody wants to talk, but they don't, I mean, when they were fenced, there was this deep, I got in there, and I walked without help, all of those, and they knocked some of those, uh, four baby, uh, uh, things that they had out there, they knocked, knocked it rotten, and they went, all, all old ones on the property, standing around, there is some others on the other side. I don't know who's gonna come back to fix it, honestly, I don't, because I know some of them are long, it's not around them. But, I'm just wondering if there is anywhere they could, if they could fit in, that's easy, if whoever took it, broke it, and took it, we bent, never put it back, maybe they just left it down, we put it, put it back, but they didn't.
Do we have any idea what it's a fence?
No, they just stand the most, you know, with the...
Oh, we don't, but we can go back up there, and something that I can progress with them, you know, it's going through direct about water and aggressive fencing issue, and, and see if I can, uh, contract with person to get that there. And that, are these headstones?
Headstones, yes, sir, even children, like one of them is, is a tiny, uh, baby, well, most of them can be years ago, you know, so we call the pious, when you want their boat, and if one of their babies, they just knocked the whole, the little one, but in the front, there was another old, old one, I mean, she tells us, none of your hand, and it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's very bad.
Like anything, sticking to the fencing, the parts, like the headstone? Maybe I can talk, uh, maybe we can talk to one of the funeral, I'm scared enough, be able to donate something, I don't, I don't know, I was up at the grand, on the funeral, and...
Some of those ones I know have to be dug in, because when they stand there, we'll, I'm fixing, I was worried about, uh, I said, I'm not in there, it's already...
I mean, that's close to, to the road, right?
Yeah. Well, they went, they went into that fence, uh, all fence, and when they tried to stop it, it went around the corner, the big tree, the series, but it killed them back, otherwise it would come out.
So, if you put a fence, it probably drives through the air, right?
Yeah, but it's worth it, right, they never done it before, now.
Of all of them. But being private, who's in charge of those cemeteries that are private? Is everybody taking them? So, who, who, who do we think have some kind of lead in? Because I, I, I find sometimes, I mean, I sometimes I feel like, speaking my own, not my private opinion, but, you know, that's kind of when, when I see there's like forty-five cemeteries, and, and only, only concentrate on one, and I'm not saying they don't belong to the city, but us as a city should, or a county, or maybe working together with a county or the city, or whatever, to try to see what we do to keep them kind of, up, you know.
We'll see, uh, at one time, sometimes the city, uh, prisoners go in there and help clean, sometimes the county, but the beauty of it is, way on the end, you know, there's a creek there.
Well, I think one of you must have taken care of this other one, he might be able to jump on that other one, if you have a hundred of them. You know, Miss Keating, that's a, that's a good point, could we meet with our municipal judge?
What happens is that one day, they went in with a bin, wow, and they dug up all, what was left, the bodies there. So then, they had to go out there and re dig and re, and turn again, because, that, I guess, it's all sand, so wherever the water hits, it just pull them out, and if you go with a grater, it's just double bad.
I can say one thing, be sure on everybody's sense to look at those pictures, because I separated them according to the launch, you know, and the one down by the river and all that, and I put several pictures so you get a lot better idea of, of that whole picture, other than the city cemetery.
Are there four ones in new business, uh, when your assistance is on us? Is there any comments?
On this, if you know.
It says all.
I've never been here, so I asked for the same one, and I will, but I don't right now.
Okay. Let's move on to new business, consideration action approved, textile, landscape construction, and maintenance agreements.
Mayor, this is just a continuation of the textile presentation that they, uh, sent back to the last go-round, where we took over, uh, the new maintenance agreement. As we talked, uh, about how we had been working on the landscape, uh, projects, that, uh, they could do within the city limits, that would, uh, be appealing, and this is just, uh, the formality of approving that, so Americans are...
Discussion Council? Motion, I can still second by these departments. They approve the, that if, maintenance agreement on the pair of the act. Close, when it cares, for zero, next item. Consideration action approved, no, it looks like they're saying we were, uh, what is this one? Margaret, could you read the, the work for the proclamation?
While people say, you know, lines on the proclamation, whereas TA society is finding its citizens involved in the work of the on the earth country. And the circumstances and all the challenges that we're all from to injury and threat of crash, that there is a need for lawyers. And whereas campaigns are held, and there are many lawyers about, and there is a certification. There is a small section related to this injury and most of all the illness, there are complications that are to be considered. And where I am due to responsibility of public rights, as we know in the U.S., we can aware of public rights, we've had any evidence, but as they never do, it's happening in the United States. And this is one thing that others' lawyers allow to avoid, like we're not supposed to do this. And whereas original citizens of our community, becoming their inherent freedom, involving operating on the separate, and providing the most first right to be a certain individual, except for the third. Now therefore, they don't want to have a relative to their source, which is why they're looking down on their own, such as the management and distribution. Further, we are now ready to be the part to the people who need assistance.
Any questions, council, the discussion? Want to give your brief some uh shopping signs?
There are. Who for a new one, there's one on uh on C Street coming up the town. And we have one of these uh, they have to be within the city and local.
The discussion council, I'm not expecting a way to pull it. Can I move the, the more sites, I expect the wider response back there. Motion by the others, I can't like to limit it. This is most likely safe and rare, isn't it, for me? I'm here to say aye. Close, appearing for zero. Next action is a consideration action through the sentence, you live through a deep access, you live through the riverbed and the station.
Oh, there's a question, I'd like to ask. Uh Mayor, council, what this is, is just to have legal access to the location of the riverbed. Uh my city, uh here, did verify the survey, the piece of bounds, the piece, the vacuum, the like, uh it does verify those ten thousand, and so our other room, uh and then the riverbed subdivision, all the way from the city.
And you said something, legal, will we agree? So the property owned by, by riverbed or?
At, at this time, it was, it's a private room, this gives us illegal access there.
I need to prove that sentence to the legal access, this meant to the station.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Lopez, if you might, you may look at the D for access, or defense, riverbed and that station, I'm here to say aye. Close, appearing for zero. Next item, consideration actions and forward to through the section two dot zero four charter order. Establishing division four, we consider the city, we have four hundred and twenty ten street.
Yes, sir, the, the, he said in question, is the alley that Mr. Sancho's want to acquire from us? By going over with Chris, uh Mr. Roser's office, uh he has informed myself and Sancho's that at this time, we're waiting for a survey, uh for the Sancho's to come in to verify, to kind of uh peruse what we have. At this time, we don't have anything uh that shows that there has been an alley there. So that's what we're waiting for a survey.
So the, the, the table?
Yes, actually, uh what we can do here is, since there is discrepancy, what the council can do is look for, if this alley is shown to exist, uh it, it has been abandoned, no utilities, we've checked, uh it is made open, and the that run through there, it's not being used for any purpose of this contractual term, and so it would be considered abandoned. Uh so if the council would like to, they can move it, if there is this alley, it would be considered abandoned, and then it can be all the property owners will then be able to go through and make a claim to. If it has been ran across, it will be their property, that if it's abandoned, it will be returned to the owners of the property that they're trying to protect.
The last thing is wait for the survey and the attending, and if it is, then we want?
Oh, you can do that.
So that would be other implications?
It would be everybody else situated up against each other on both sides. In these situations, usually if there is easement, it's out on the property, and then out on the property itself.
Alright, so just, let me, you can enable it to get serving, and then there is, may I, we know it was, we have all this on. And maybe just a question.
Uh where supposedly is this easement at? Because I often have probably uh on the other side of the offices, so I don't know where they're talking about.
I don't have a map, show you, you sure want?
Yes, there's a map in there, we've got a map, uh, basically, it runs uh, they're on parallel to N Street, from C Street to D Street. Is there a date on that survey?
No, I left him a message.
When will we find out?
Uh it'll be whatever it's scheduled to begin.
We'll let everyone know, but I'm.
Mr. Sancho, you want to say something?
Sure.
Do you want to say something about the, about the action?
Well, no, I, like I said, we're, they're just waiting for the surveys, so I'll just provide them with a copy of the survey, and we'll go from there.
So what table? Is that the right place? Table? Motion by table, table, by Lopez, is it a reset? Is it, I, I feel, if they're to say aye?
Aye.
All close? Will be carried before you go to table? Our next table, we will be close to six, so if I have this by then. Consideration action according Johnny Lopez to work with city staff, who's definitely recognized to counsel. Resolved race election, calling and approval, of the proposed offers include benefits, added by criteria.
Mayor, just uh for council information, it, it states Johnny Marbolas and Mayor, and I was offering this, this is put on the agenda by myself. Uh Councilman Lopez has been working, uh, or is, is taking the lead on this contractual issue that we've got on pending treaties. And I just want to make sure that he was involved, we wanted to be satisfied. Uh Sherry Bullock and uh this young man right here have been working on, on the contract itself, if that brought draft forty uh to review, and if you want him to be the representative, if you follow off of him, he's been here. Bring a final opinion to the committee. He's always just, he's not that honest person.
Special motion, folks?
I know that we appointed uh Councilman Alm, who has the city staff, decided to recognize the council for solid which collection. Always, and it goes with concept, so it's your full property and bringing best that is understood.
Motion by the state, would you say it?
I say.
Yeah, if I can, I'll, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion appearing one. Right enough, consideration action, already considered resolution, about the north, picking, picking break, to provide the publication effective date, and establish definition this term's bureau.
Yes.
This is in regards to uh large vehicles that are pointing to the city now?
Yes, Mayor, uh with the broadside, I mean, there's, with all the increases in the semi trucks and traffic going through now, that there is a potential, there have been, I guess, a few occurrences of these, using engine braking, which is has to talk to the compression cycle, venting, it creates a really loud, and not good sound, uh inside the city. And so what this is, is a proposal to, assuming these values have gone, to adopt coordinates prohibiting that activity within city limits, of course.
Would you be special?
It's actu- actually, that's actually a very good idea, I know with the uh excess traffic of uh on, for the law and everything else, I know that uh it's very much in the middle of the night and morning, you can hear that, great. Um I know politics still is, I know I see them, I know I see signs in the paper. Um I think most of the cities down south are in the night, it would be a great idea, I think it's actually a positive. Um what is the, does it mean to achieve that I have? Ask, what would it be to be a problem or something like that?
Uh I believe it's a five hundred dollar civil crime, or a five hundred dollar criminal crime, sorry, of, of misdemeanor. And then there are civil crimes that can attack if it's continuing to be abused with certain company or their accord.
I mean, uh, yeah, I think that would, not only that, but they do that in order to scroll down at the last minute. So it would be, it would be, I think, a positive, um, so I think it's a great idea.
How many people have, have uh, uh cities, I mean, looked into, have any models out there that have amazing, good?
I can't give you an exact number, I know that, that most of the cities on there, they don't have an exact number, I can't tell you this number, I can give that to the council.
I mean, you have a first reading on there.
It'll be, because it's a, it'll have to be read as an ordinance, as a proposed ordinance. Uh and then, like, a few days into the second reading, and then it's just a common.
Yeah, I'm trying to, probably the ordinance, just to see, you know, was, was the fine, you know, like, two hundred, three hundred in other towns, and kind of look at, to maybe know the people that, and cities that, and stuff like that, was more okay with the ordinance at that time, I guess. We'll push forward. Is there motion, is there the first reading?
I think the motion is to be considered, considered revolution, not in order, but if it is, I'm going to try to provide the publication and effective date, and two dollars definitions, and terms, uh.
Motion by Lopez, if you might, I feel, if you're ready to consider resolution, about the order, if you're ready to continue breaking, the first reading, I'm here to say aye.
Aye.
Close, will be prepared as soon as you're here. Last item we did is a discussion of regarding the reckless desire, Mr. Gomez.
About, about three weeks ago, uh I'm always out and about, and I know that it was some bad weather. Um and one of the things that came up, just your friends kind of talking, was the silent. I know everyone does that, and you remember when you're on base, right? So I was reading over it, and someone commented on, remember when you had a silent, walk that glove, you know, the whole thing. Um and these people are, I was watching some show, I forget what it was, and even though we're not, it's not, it's possible here. Basically, anyway, so I thought about why it was supposed, I was trying to ask a question about that, it's all hot.